I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, my name is John Samia and I'm the chairman of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectment. On behalf of my fellow board members of the Town Manager's Office, I'd like to welcome you to our September 28th, 2021 Board of Selectment meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on channels 30 and 330 and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on the same channels, 30 and 330, and Facebook from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting on October 12th, 2021. Tonight's meeting will also be available on YouTube starting tomorrow for your viewing pleasure. First item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second. I've been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve minutes of September 8th, 2021, and September 14th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second. I've been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is announcements and reports. Any colleagues, any announcements at all?
Um, here at Shrewsbury, there was this past weekend, I think that their crew of volunteers and committee members deserve a congratulations on putting together a really nice event. Um, I was able to attend the expo for a bit at Oak Middle School and everybody seemed to be having a great time. Our DPW actually had an awesome display, too. They should get a shout out for setting it up. I thought there was, there was like a huge crowd gathered to see all the different equipment and things that they had set out there.
Great, thank you. Ms. LeBeau.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to report, as you all know, most of you were there, that last Friday, um, there was the celebration, it wasn't a ribbon cutting, but there was the celebration of, of the new Beal Elementary School on Lake Street. It is a beautiful facility and a great deal of excitement in the building and happy kids in the building and a big tip of the hat to our construction manager, our owner's project manager, and our architects, Fontaine Brothers, PMA associates, and LPA, for just a fabulous job. And, uh, you know, one has to take note of the fact that so much of the actual construction process happened during COVID and all the complications that arrived from that. We still wound up with a beautiful building and grounds that was on time and under budget.
Thank you. Any others? Uh, I have a few announcements, just to follow up on Mr. LeBeau's announcement. Last Friday was wonderful, it's a great investment in our community and the enthusiasm and energy throughout the gymnasium and throughout the school could be felt. There's a lot of great learning to be done there for generations to come. Hopefully, like a former Beal, we get a hundred years of learning and leadership from that school, and that was one of many subjects that was talked about. So we look forward to developing future leaders of our community and our world at Beal, together with all the other schools. I also want to recognize Mr. LeBeau and our former colleague, Mr. Kane, for chairing the building committee. I know the work is still to be done, but appreciate your leadership in helping move that forward to where we are today. And as you had mentioned, it's on time and under budget, particularly in light of these unprecedented times, and they seem not to have let up, they have done a really good job. Want to thank all those who made it possible, um, a lot of those individuals were recognized during that wonderful celebration. And most importantly, I want to thank the residents of Shrewsbury for once again investing in our community and having faith in their leadership to make the capital investments that our community needs. Also, speaking of Beal, uh, we received from the school committee a notice of vote. The school committee took a vote on, at their regularly scheduled meeting on September 22nd, 2021. Um, and the vote, the gist of it is said that Beal School is no longer necessary for school purposes, and they instructed the secretary to provide notice of this declaration to the Board of Selectment. And technically, what that does is put the building back into general municipal purposes or accounts over here. And then, speaking of Beal as well, we had talked back at our June 8th regularly scheduled meeting, we had a presentation, our summary of all the events that had happened to that point, um, through the reuse committee, uh, then through the RFP process, as well as the RFP that we had received through one respondent. Um, and then we talked about the process at our June 29th Selectmen's Roundtable. The expectation at that time was that we'd have a public hearing in September. We continued to work throughout the summer and July, on July 28th, we engaged Landwise, a consultant, to assist us with the negotiations on the sale of the property. Um, we had previously talked about that, it's a very small investment of $5,000 to provide additional expertise in this area. Uh, on September 1st, our, our term sheet was submitted to Civico, and on September 10th, 2021, we have two board members, the Town Manager's Office, and our consultant met with Civico to discuss the term sheet, and we expect, um, as an outcome from that, that Civico will refine their cost analysis and give back to the town no later than the first full week of October. So, it's been a thoughtful, constructive, and collaborative process to date. Uh, we're taking time to make sure that we are going in the direction we believe where it should be, so that's why we are where we are in September. But we fully expect, as this moves forward, to provide the town with a meaningful, our residents with a meaningful opportunity to provide feedback on a project, um, once it's tangible and something to react to. So we're still working through all of that. A lot of hard work that's being done, just taking a little time longer, which is important of a project of this magnitude. And then, that's it for Beal, so we talked about a few of those, and then I have reading about an advisory, so I'll read that now. An advisory from the Mass Department of Public Health has been issued for all non-vaccinated and fully vaccinated people to wear a mask in public indoor settings, that's why we're all wearing masks today, and areas of substantial or high transmission. Shrewsbury, Worcester County has been categorized as a high level of community transmission for over a month. Therefore, we require that all employees and visitors in all municipal buildings wear a face mask. Exemptions from the mask requirement include those with a medical or other eligible condition. In addition, we ask all those attending the meeting to practice social distancing, leaving space between yourself and other non-related parties also attending the meeting. The board members here tonight will also be masked and practicing social distancing through their seating arrangements. When speaking, we ask that your face mask remains on. Thank you. And that is, those are all the announcements that I have. And now on to Town Manager's Report, Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, board members. A couple of updates for you this evening, um, as we do every, um, year at this time. I've received a summary of bid results from DPW Director Jeff Howland with regards to the success of our, um, bids for winter rock salt. We participate in a 17-town joint purchasing arrangement, which is headed up by Nick Repecta, our Highway Division Manager. Unfortunately, unlike in previous years, we've actually seen a substantial increase in rock salt prices this year. We, um, the lowest bid came in at $62 a ton, which is a $17 per ton increase, or about 38% higher than last winter. We have been on a downward trend over the last few years, and since we know that this is somewhat of a volatile commodity, uh, we have not really, uh, taken reductions in this budget area over those years, so we should be in a, still well-positioned to be able to manage this, and couple that with having a full, um, large, uh, John Nype Jr.'s uh, salt shed out there at the highway garage, um, that will keep as full as possible throughout the course of the year. So, um, just wanted to provide that update, and, um, hopefully we don't have to use it, but we're ready if we do. With regards to, um, the Affordable Housing Trust, I'm informing the board that given the provisions of that charge and actually general bylaw, that the Assistant Town Manager will serve as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, as there's an option for the manager or the assistant. So it'll be Assistant Town Manager for Community Development, Kristen Lass, will hold that seat. Um, two related updates with regards to strategic planning and community engagement. The town has received five very well-thought-out and presented, um, proposals in response to our RFP for Strategic Planning Support Services, um, which will drive us towards a 2030 community vision statement and strategic plan to put that into action. And, um, we have begun this week in starting our social media and general media campaign with regards to that community engagement, um, so you can check that out on our Facebook page and our Twitter account. And, uh, the first step in that process will be, um, distributing the National Community Survey to residents throughout the community. More information will be coming in the coming weeks on this, but we want folks to begin to get ready to get involved with us and provide their feedback, uh, to help shape the future of Shrewsbury. So, I will look forward to that process, and we'll keep you updated at your meetings and on social media. And that is all I have for my general report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Do you want to continue on to the coronavirus COVID-19 report from the Town Manager?
Let's put this up on the screen real quick. With regards to COVID-19 report this evening, um, we've experienced 95 additional positive cases since your last meeting on September 14th. Um, so we continue to see a upward trend in our total positive case count from much earlier in the summer. We've experienced 42 cases in the last seven days, and that seven-day trend is a little bit lower, um, than previous seven-day trends, but this week, unfortunately, we're experiencing a higher case volume than the past week. So it does, um, seem like the variant and the virus is still with us, and ask everyone to do what they can to minimize the spread. You can see on the screen that we're on this very different trajectory than we were on in any other surge or wave of COVID. It's a very gradual uptick in comparison to what we were experiencing last fall, but it's certainly still here with us. With regards to vaccinations, uh, continue to be pleased that we see additional individuals getting, um, their first round of vaccine. Over 260 have received their, their first dose, or about 260 have received their first dose since your last meeting, and 313 have become fully vaccinated. We're nearing the 70 percentile, just at 69%, with 27,439 residents, uh, being fully vaccinated. Um, a little hard to see on the screen, but that's the data as it breaks out into the various age cohorts. Again, the 20 through 29-year-olds seem to be the lagging cohort still, with only 63%. Um, a total of 69% of all eligible are vaccinated. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions related to COVID.
Thank you. Any questions? I want to proceed to the next item under Financial Business, the Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Timeline.
Yes, thank you. So as we're once again back at the start of a new budget cycle, um, we are preparing to, um, lead ourselves forward to the annual town meeting, which, uh, the date will be finalized and established at some point, uh, given the changes in the general bylaw, as we, uh, get towards the end of winter. Um, I'm using a schedule conservatively, since I have 90-day, I have to publish a budget 90 days in advance of town meeting, that becomes a little bit more tricky when it's not a fixed date, but, um, again, I've been conservative, so I can make sure I meet that requirement. With regards to our public-facing aspects of budget, uh, planning and development, we'll start that on November 9th, uh, with a financial update from the first quarter of the current fiscal year and a presentation of our FY '23 Initial Revenue Manual, and, uh, follow that up with, uh, policies and, um, objectives for the fiscal year, which will lead us to the budget call in early December with all departments, and then start the normal cycle that will include Finance Committee hearings. Uh, I will remind the board, although you're well aware, there'll probably be a little bit more upfront planning this year, as we will be reporting on and coordinating all the commitments and requirements through the, uh, board's commitment to the community along with the school committee with regards to the override. Uh, so that will require additional determinations on, uh, the revenue model and the percentages that, uh, the school department, municipal departments will be allowed to use when creating their budgets. So, uh, we'll keep you posted on that process as we work towards our initial revenue model, and, um, happy to answer any other questions, but this really leads us again, once again, on that traditional cycle from early November until middle of May, when we have the annual town meeting.
Any questions or comments? I just have one comment, it's consistent with what you had just mentioned. We want to consider, um, the, one of the requirements is that we will hold at least two joint public meetings annually to better inform, so this was a commitment between the board and the school committee, should we put those dates somewhere in here as part of this process? One probably upfront, and one towards the end, I think, as the opera, the results are, is we're either towards the budget being finalized, especially after, uh, town meeting, just so we can meet that. So that's just one of the, um, commitments that we made to consider to add that. Anything else? Great, thank you. So next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled appointment, public hearing, it's past 7:05. We have a public hearing with Tyler Tomes, owner of the Big H LLC, DBA Jersey Mike Subs, 88120 Boston Turnpike Suite, J-12, for a common victual license. Uh, in terms of location, just to visualize it, it's where the former Be Good, um, place was, uh, restaurant was before, right next to Dunkin' Donuts. Is anyone here for the proponent? Please come on up, up to the table, if you could also introduce yourself, please.
Hi, everyone, uh, my name's Tyler Tomes, I am the franchisee and the owner-operator of the incoming Jersey Mike Subs at 120 Boston Turnpike.
Great, thank you. So the hours, all the paperwork is included in here. Any questions at all before we open up the public hearing? Okay. Now we'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone here that would like to talk or have any comments related to the, um, request for the common victular license? I don't see anybody, there being none, I'll take a motion to close the public.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, uh, two questions, um, when do you think you're gonna open?
November 3rd.
November 7?
November 3rd.
Oh, November 3rd, okay. And how many employees do you think you have?
Um, I'm looking to employ on my total roster between 30 and 40 people, um, in the beginning. Um, obviously, some of those people will never show up again, once they are offered the job, but, um, between five to 10 full-time employees.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Cassavian.
Is this your, and do you own other ones?
This is my first one. Um, it's my only one so far. Um, you don't get to open more until you're proven successful in your first. Um, it is my plan to be a multi-unit operator, but I'm in no rush to, uh, get to that next one, because I want the first one to be perfect.
Great. Glad that you chose Shrewsbury for your first one.
Yeah, so am I.
Any other questions? And the hours of operation would be, uh, Sunday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 9 p.m., seven days a week?
Correct.
Anything else? If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. I've been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes unanimously. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the common victular license for Tyler Tomes, owner of the Big Eck LLC, DBA Jersey Mike Subs, 88120 Boston Turnpike Suite, J-12, a common victular's license.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
I've been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and good luck.
Thanks so much.
Next item on the agenda is a meeting with our chief, Kevin Anderson, Chief of the Shrewsbury Police Department, providing a departmental update. Uh, this is something new, to, uh, provide an opportunity outside of the budget cycle to meet the leadership of our town departments, as well as have an opportunity for those watching at home, um, to also understand what our department's doing on a regular basis, so welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. May I just take a minute?
Oh, no problem.
Looks like it's in, uh, winning mode. Do you, you see this power point on your screen, chief?
I do.
Can, uh, shoot, oh, Mark's gonna help you.
That's enough.
Yeah, there we go. Perfect.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sarah.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Chief Anderson, I'm here to give an annual update for the Shrewsbury Police Department. I'm gonna start with the, the big one, the station update. Uh, we, we're three weeks into construction, the building area footings and foundation forming is pouring and ongoing. Permanent power and data setup is in the upcoming week, should be in the, uh, probably the early next week, for the, um, two buildings, temporary buildings that are on site. Uh, no issues of insurance were noted at the time of the last inspection, and as we always love to hear, three weeks in, so far, on budget and on time. Hopefully that continues. Next, I'll go over the hiring and our staffing. In 2021, we had 10 vacant positions, uh, six of one were from retirement, and four are new hires that were approved in fiscal 2022, which started in, uh, July 1st. Through civil service, the process of hiring officers is lengthy and requires coordination with civil service, calling for list requisitions, conducting background investigations, interviews, medical and psychological exams, two separate physicals, and then finding an academy, so the process can take quite a long time. Uh, during COVID-19, most state academies were limited to 25 seats, which presented difficulties in securing openings. Academies now are back up to full capacity, the issue is a lot of municipalities and cities are in the same boat we are, and they're trying to find academies to backfill positions. Uh, once seats are reserved, the academy is in approximately five months, then the officers in field training for about three months. So this means that the entire process of hiring a police officer can be up to a year and a half. So if I was told today, I can hire a police officer, you will not see a police officer until, most likely, December of 2022. We had Officer DiSimoni graduated from the Randolph Police Academy on July 2nd this year, and Officer Matero will be graduating from the Boilsom Police Academy next Monday. We originally had three officers in that academy, uh, one withdrew in Week 2, and the other was dismissed for academic failures. Another candidate injured themselves during one of the physical fitness tests and is waiting to re-attempt the test. Several candidates were also bypassed during the background interview process. During this background interview process, we bypassed eight candidates. We had three officers scheduled to begin the Plymouth Police Academy on September 20th, one of which was unable to pass the final physical fitness test, so now we only have two officers attending that academy. We had three officers scheduled for the Boilsom Police Academy in December, one of those officers now unable to complete the physical fitness test for medical reasons, so we'll have two officers in that academy. So that leaves us two open positions. And currently, right now, the December academy is full, and there's a waitlist. So again, if we had background, everything's completed right now, we wouldn't be able to put someone in till academy in March. Our current staff, we hired two new administrative assistants, one to replace one that resigned, and one that took a, um, a job in another agency. And we also hired two new dispatchers, one for, to replace one that resigned, and also one to replace one that became an officer on our department and is currently in the police academy. So our authorized strength is 54 sworn. Just note that for a department our size, based in our community size, the average, national average, would be about 24 more than that, so it's about two per thousand residents. We have nine dispatchers, one dispatch supervisor, five administrative assistants, one animal control, and have been approved fiscal '22 for one mental health clinician. We actively seek out grants. Currently, we have an application for the FY '22 Support Incentive Grant, that's offered through the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department, and that is gonna be for about $128,000. That is used for reimbursement for dispatcher salaries. We're in the process of applying for a fiscal '22 State 911 Department Training Grant. That's a reimbursement grant for dispatchers to receive additional training, up to 16 hours a year, and that pays for training, backfill of the position, and also overtime for the dispatchers to attend that training. We should be getting right around $11,000, and we'll know in the next couple of weeks. We are currently in the process of applying for a grant for a co-response mental health clinician in Geol Divergent Program. As you're all aware, we were approved for one fiscal 2022. And if we get approved for this, this will be for three years, and we'll pay the salary, and also additional overtime for that person if they have to come in off hours. It'll cover the full salary, and also, um, it'll, the mental health clinician will be embedded with our department. The person will work the 3 to 11 shift and will corespond with police to mental health calls. We believe this position is critical in providing our officers and citizens more resources during mental health emergencies from a trained mental health professional. We just completed our final traffic campaign for fiscal 2021 Immiscible Road Safety Grant, which ended just in August. We're worth a total of about $25,000 for this, and this is for overtime for officers to, um, the, to do traffic enforcement and in the, um, in the community. We also, um, conducted five campaigns, which we worked off in national campaigns, and that was winter impaired driving, distracted driving, clicker or ticket speeding, and summer impaired driving. With the equipment funds, we purchased a new portable radar speed sign, which you may have seen around town. That's actually got a lot of, uh, feedback, positive feedback from that. What that does is it's an electronic speed radar sign that shows you what the speed limit is and what you're traveling. We can also download, um, information off that, that unit via laptop, and it will give us specific readings of what the average speed is, when the, uh, speeds occur most, and just, uh, different information that we can use to allocate our resources within the community. We also were able to purchase two LiDAR units and two radar units, which will be used patrol and also on the lake for traffic enforcement. We're currently on the waiting list with the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for a grant for the installation of a MAC system, that's Motor Vehicle Automatic Citation and Craft System. With that is, it will be inside the cruiser, and that'll allow the officer on scene, it will save so much time. They'll just be able to take the person's license, swipe it through, and all that information will go right onto a citation that will be sent electronically, so no more paper, and also, we could do it for reports as well. Again, saving paper, saving time, and it saves the admin assistants time in typing the reports and putting all that information in. Uh, training, we just wrapped up fiscal '21 training. We have our required in-service training, typical firearms, CPR, first aid, defensive tactics, and legal updates. In 2021, which was completed in June 30th of this year, we had domestic terrorism, implicit bias, responding to pandemics and emergencies, and longevity and law enforcement, and that completed on January, uh, June 30th of this year. Uh, fiscal '22, same thing, we have the regular mandated training, but we're also gonna be have training in responding to emergencies involving persons with mental illness, cultural competency in responding to mass gatherings, which is crowd management, human trafficking, and law enforcement officer mental wellness, and critical incidents stress management and suicide prevention. We also did a lot of extra training this year. We sent four officers to crisis intervention training through Open Sky Community Services in Worcester. This training provides officers with the tools needed to provide resources for both our citizens and also our officers during critical sense, incidents and traumatic experiences. We also sent two sergeants to active bystandership for law enforcement training, that's the ABLE training, which is provided by Georgetown University. And if the board remembers, during my interview, I, I mentioned that, that it's very important training that I feel is very good for our department. And what that does is that will certify two supervisors, train all our officers in the subject, it's called Train the Trainer, um, training. And ABLE training focuses on training officers to intervene when they witness other officers or individuals acting inappropriately, including incidents such as excessive, using excessive force. We have been required by mass law, uh, in 1993, it's Commonwealth versus Adams, we've been required to intervene for many years now. This training takes it one step further. It gives the officer the training to know how to identify and notice these things that may be happening prior to them happening, so it has the officer intervene prior to an incident, getting, uh, in a situation where it's difficult to intervene. Also, we went to fear and impartial police training. Uh, this was the entire department, I thought that was, it was very important to send everyone to this. It was, um, held by Lori Friedel. She's a PhD, uh, she is nationally recognized, she's written several books on the subject matter. The entire department went to this training, including myself, it was really good training. Um, we thought it was a critical topic, and we chose to send everybody in the department to it. In addition to this training, all supervisors were required to attend police reform It was really good training. We thought it was a critical topic, and we chose to send everybody in the department to it. In addition to this training, all supervisors were required to attend police reform and bias-free policing. And this was, training was held here. We had it here at the senior center, and it was held by Attorney John Scheft, and he's from law enforcement dimensions. Our school resource officers went to training a couple of weeks back to be certified as school resource officers, and they attended training conducted by the National Association of School Resource Officers. It's a nationally recognized and respected program. The topics that they went over were foundations for school resources working in educational environments, understanding students with special needs, ethics, counseling and mentorship, understanding team thinking, developing and supporting successful relationships with diverse students, social media and cyber safety, and violence and victimization. I think both officers do a tremendous job. I think Officer Heston and Officer Velia really do a great job there at the schools, and they went to this training, and they're going to come back and work on all these programs with the school department. Currently, we work in partnership with Lexipol. They're a national organization that assists in upgrading police policies and procedures. Many of our current policies were written by police officers or adopted by other agencies, and some of them 10 to 15 years old. Lexipol's policies and procedures are written and reviewed by attorneys who specialize in this field. Their policies are standardized across the country. However, they do tailor them to specific states' needs. And we have an attorney that's licensed in Mass, and he's familiar with policies and procedures and also the laws of Mass. They actively review the legal updates and update their policies at least two times per year. If necessary, laws can be changed quickly as well. Policies can be changed to update the laws that have changed. Policies are in an easy-to-understand language, but are legally sound and inclusive. And what's really good about them is they meet the certification and accreditation standards. And also, Lexipol offers an app where officers can view all policies and procedures anywhere. Currently, how it is, they have to leave their cruiser, come back to the station, get on a laptop, look at the policies and procedures on the computer. They'll have it right on their phone, so they'll be able to do it right there while they're on a call. Also included with the subscription with Lexipol is a monthly quizzes. They create 30 scenario-based questions that are given to us once a month, and we'll be giving them out to all the officers, so they'll be, keep officers more up to date on their policies, increase situational awareness, and reduce liability for the town. What we do is we've created a six-member working team within the department, including myself, and we meet with Lexipol attorney twice a week for four hours each, and we rewrite the policies together, based on Massachusetts standards and laws and based on their best practices. So, this process will take about another year to do. There's quite a bit of work with it, but the guy's doing a phenomenal job in the department and working very hard on it. We also updated our scheduling software. For years, we've been just using pen and paper, and we've been doing that for 30 years. So, we've upgraded, and we're going to a scheduling software where it's all on your phone, on your laptop, on your tablet. So, officers, we can put in time off requests right through their phone, and they can get approved by the supervisor right by their phone. So, there's no more having to come to the station or put the slip in. Sometimes it would get lost or be mishandled. This is going to streamline the process. We'll also be able to track overtime details and also part-time officers. We are upgrading our records management system. We've been using a company called Hammett since 1986. They let us know in 2020 that they were going to be going out of business no longer. So, we looked at several different options, and we thought MAC 43 was the best option. They were very progressive, and I think it's the best fit for the department. It's a cloud-based records management system and computer-aided dispatch. It's been vetted by the U.S. government, security, and is financially backed by Jeff Bezos. It has over 300 configurable fields and features, so we can determine how our data is collected, assessed, and shared. The main data push will be sometime around December 1st. It's important to note that the data provider is only as good as the data we put in. We're going to have to develop new standard operating procedures to truly utilize MAC 43 to its fullest potential. Currently, our service calls can be broken down in type, and we have the possibility to review percentages. But this will not include any racial data. We don't ask anyone's race when we're in an incident, or the only time we do is when they're arrested. When we're giving a citation, we don't ask the race either. We guess what their race is based on what we think that their race is, so we don't ask anyone's race other than when they're arrested. We made Lake Patrol a priority this year. As you all know, we've had quite the uptick in calls for service on the lake. We prioritize staffing, trained additional officers in boat operations and safety. From Memorial Day to Labor Day in 2020, we had 419 lake incidents. From Memorial Day to Labor Day this year, we logged 749 incidents, which is about a 78% increase in calls on the lake. This increase is presumably due to a combination of increased lake activity as well as increased patrols and enforcement. In June, we sent Shrewsbury Boat Operators were trained in the Basic Crew Member Course, which is a U.S. Coast Guard Recognized Qualification Course. They did subject matters such as handling navigation, risk mitigation, multi-agency coordination, first aid, and rescue operations. In July 2021, we partnered with the Worcester Police, the Environmental Police, Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, and the United States Coast Guard, and we participated in Operation Dry Water, which is a nationwide campaign that tackles boating under the influence and promoting public safety. It was a very successful campaign for us this summer. Also, we created a joint task force that was aimed at ensuring residents and visitors are able to enjoy the lake and their activities in a safe, responsible manner. Now, the task force was actually very active this summer. It's composed of the Worcester, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts Environmental Police, and Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation. They focus on the water to enforce boating and watercraft laws, and so we have the legal and safe operation of watercraft. On the land, they focused on enforcing park, boat ramp, and parking rules and regulation and deter general criminal activity with a focus on the boat ramps. What we also did this year, which is new, is we had one of our own officers stationed at the boat ramp on busy times, and that was actually very successful. As a result of those proactive patrols, we documented 110 boats that were denied access to the lake. They were either denied because, what we do is we had a safety checklist, so we had the officer check everyone's boat, make sure they had all the safety equipment on the boat. So, they either denied access due to the safety regulations, or they were uninsured, unregistered, and that's 110 that we did this year. We didn't allow people on the lake. Just to give you an idea, in 2015, we had 83 calls for service total on Lakewood-Sigamet. So, that's how much we've increased our calls on that lake. And that's all I have, other than Traffic Report would be next. Anyone has any questions?
Sure, colleagues, Mr. DePaulo.
What are you guys doing on your spare time? Tremendous, all the stuff that you're doing. I think it's great. I commend you for doing it. I don't know how you do it with everything else, but I think it's great that you're moving the department forward and thinking ahead and using technology and doing things that are more sensitive to minority groups, people with disabilities, mental health issues. I think it's great. I think you do a great job.
Thank you. We have a great staff. I can't say enough about how they all work. They work through a pandemic, and they come in every day. Sometimes they work 16 hours a day. They work very hard.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. Thank you for the report. I just noticed, as I was listening to you, the focus on training and how diverse the training is, and I think that sometimes the public doesn't recognize that the culture of our department is the way that it is because of the training that's done and that it doesn't stop when an officer completes the academy, but there's ongoing training that is built into someone's career with the Shrewsbury Police Department. And I just, listening to the different opportunities for training and the things that you found important, especially around diversity and mental health, those are two areas that I know are a particular concern for people, and I'm glad to see that you're being proactive in making sure that our officers are prepared.
Thank you. We always say in this business, I'm still learning now, 28 years, and I learn something new every day.
Mr. LeBeau.
Chief, I just want to say it's a very impressive report, and it's great to hear that the buy-in from the officers and the superior officers, but it comes from the top down, so tip of the hat.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Simeon? Yes, Mr. Mizikar, please.
I just wanted to echo what the board members have said. It's a pleasure working with the chief. Just as we've committed to, this board's committed to throughout the course of the year, to highlight how we're spending those extra override dollars that the community committed to investing in us so we can invest in them. Just pointing out four main areas that the chief highlighted, the additional training opportunities, the comprehensive review of our policies through the Lexipol system, like we're also doing in the Fire Department, the hiring of the mental health clinician, and then the hiring of the three additional officers on top of that. So, that's all a direct result of the yes, override vote that we're so grateful for to be able to augment the department and continue to build it.
Thank you. This was a great report. It's great to be in a non-budget setting to understand what our men and women do on a daily basis to keep our streets and all of us safe. We heard a lot of groundbreaking about 21st century policing, and I think you've described a lot of that today, whether it's looking at mental health, training, best practices, applicable law, changing standards, and reviewing our policies. I think it's far different than I would have envisioned, say, 10 years ago in terms of what a police department would look like. So, that's great, and it's very informative, and it's very helpful to hear that this evening. The other thing that you did not mention that I think is worth mentioning, because I did have the opportunity to meet with you a while ago, and you also are very forward-thinking in terms of strategic planning. As we embark upon strategic planning for our community towards 2030, you've also done some of that on your own. Could you just talk about that in terms of how you envision strategic planning and for the department as well with your approach?
Sure. Again, I put together a five-year strategic plan, and it's based on what the needs are for the police department, and it's incremental each year. And, you know, one of those things, I'll be talking next about this traffic report, and that would be a traffic division. So, I'll touch a little bit on that further in this presentation. Yeah, I think that's very important to have a plan, because if you don't have a plan, you know, you need to know where you're going. So, I think it's very important to have a detailed plan. You know, obviously, that can change, but you really have to have a plan, so that's why I put the five-year strategic plan together. And, you know, I can have it, present it, and give it to the board if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great. Looking at the RFPs and part of the technical proposal was looking at plans, policies, and the like that our community already does, and I think this is one area that's very important, as whichever consultant we go with as part of the strategic planning process understands what we do as a community, so we get it right. So, thank you. I think it's important, and society's changing, and the world's changing, and we're doing our best to get ahead of that, which is changing so quickly with social media and standards and people's, folks' demands and all of that and expectations, and you're doing a great job leading that. So, thank you for your leadership, and I just want to thank you and your team. Since March of 2020, you've kept our residents safe and selflessly, where you have answered the call, reaching out to our community, not understanding what COVID meant early on and transmission, and still throughout that, we've had peaks and valleys, yet our police department has been there as all of our public safety. So, thank you for all of those efforts as well and your leadership, as well as your presentation tonight. This is our first presentation of this type, and you've left a great mark, and it's going to be hard to meet it, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's a good question.
Yeah, Mr. DePaulo.
Chief, on that ticketing system you were talking about that you'd be able to have in the cruises, how many cruises would have it?
So, we would get slotted for five right away, but then we would apply for it again.
So, you'd have most of them out on a shift?
Exactly. Yep.
Great. So, anything else at this point?
Ms. Chairman.
Mrs. Flynn.
I try not to repeat everything that my colleagues say, but I don't want my silence to be misconstrued, so I echo what everyone has said. Very grateful for all that you and your team do, and I think it should be recognized that sometimes when things run smoothly and there aren't a lot of incidences that, you know, the public is otherwise aware of, that's a good thing. So, you know, thank you for doing the right thing, for your team and for our community.
Thank you.
So, at this point, we'll go to our next item, traffic, and I'll also invite Jeff Howland, our Director of Department of Public Works, as well as Andy Truman, our Town Engineer, from Engineering and Conservation Division Manager, to come forward. And just by way of background, so we have received a lot of information about traffic, concerns about speeding, high-volume traffic in school zones. So, we've heard about speed, volume on secondary roads in terms of, one email, tons of construction vehicles all day long, whether there are truck restrictions on residential roads, and we've heard that, even in part of tonight's correspondence. We are going to talk about that in terms of folks who've reached out to us, whether Spring Street or Honeysuckle or Washington, where they've had concerns about different traffic issues that I talked about. So, what we're hoping for tonight, from Chief and as well as Director Howland, is an opportunity to discuss traffic issues, options available, what the town can do to address these issues, and first would ask the Chief to provide an overview about the traffic issues that we've seen in terms of speed and volume and all of that, and his approach on that, and then would also recommend, invite Director Howland, it's the same deal, and to talk about issues and recommendations and the like. Want to thank all of you as we've received these requests, whether speed studies or evaluations, you've been quick to react, whether it's trailers on a residential road, or whether it's speed studies, you've been out there very quickly, and recently, we've shared data with residents who expressed concern, so we appreciate all of your efforts. With that, I'll turn the floor to you to talk about traffic, which we've heard a lot about and look forward to hearing from you about.
Absolutely. So, traffic concerns continue to be one of our most common complaints made by residents. I don't like to throw stats out there, but I'm just going to give you a few. So, last year in 2020, we responded to 747 motor vehicle accidents, 112 hit-and-run accidents were investigated, 451 disabled motor vehicles, and 515 traffic complaints that we investigated. Additionally, there were 67 formal traffic complaints investigated, and that's where we get a complaint, the Operations Division Commander, he puts it out to one of the staff to look into, and we meet with the resident, and we come up with a plan, a solution. So, there was 67 of those formal traffic complaints. We currently utilize radar speed signs that I spoke about earlier to make drivers aware of their speeds in relation to the neighborhoods in which they are driving and address residents' speeding concerns, and we plan on getting three more of them through a grant coming up in the next month or so. I like to call it traffic calming. It's a term the way you use a three-pronged approach to address the traffic within a community, and that's education, enforcement, and engineering. Education, that's a process of making drivers aware of their speeds in relation to neighborhoods in which they are driving. Again, that's how we do that is through using those radar signs, and also when we pull over residents and advising them what the speed limit is, because there are times when residents aren't aware of actual. We also conduct surveys to educate residents of the average speed of the traffic on the roadway in the particular times speeding may be occurring. We also conduct education on social media. What we do is we advise, you know, we have, you know, how dangerous to do texting while driving, while operating under the influence. We tend to do these right around the times that we conduct those five traffic campaigns throughout the Municipal Road Safety Grant that I spoke about earlier. We focus next is enforcement, so we focus enforcement at the problem streets and increase community awareness of the speeding problems. A lot of times when we conduct traffic enforcement, we'll choose just for that entire night. Instead of giving citations, we let, you know, we speak to the residents when we pull them over and let them know what the speed is and that they were actually speeding. Again, sometimes residents aren't aware of the actual speed limits. We conduct enforcement while patrolling and assigning the assigned sector, and again, the five traffic campaigns through the Municipal Road Safety Grant. Those campaigns are the winter impaired driving, the distracted driving, a clicker or ticket, which clicker or ticket has helped achieve the nationwide seatbelt use of 85%, and that's pretty impressive. Also, a speeding campaign, which is in the spring, and then the summer impaired driving campaign. What gives us the authority to stop people and cite them for speeding? That's under the Mass General Law's Chapter 90. So, the one we use most is Chapter 9017, and that authorizes officers to use discretion when conditions require slower operations for safe travel. That would be like in a snowstorm, a windstorm, a hurricane. That would be like in a snowstorm, a windstorm, a hurricane, something to that effect. It also defines reasonable speed during normal conditions when no limits are posted. So this would be normal conditions, no posted speed limits. It's 50 miles per hour for a distance of a quarter mile on a rural divided highway. An example, that would be Route 9, divided highway. 40 miles per hour for a quarter of a mile on a rural highway that is not divided. That example would be Grafton Street, Route 140, or even Maple Avenue. And then 30 miles per hour for an eighth of a mile on a thickly settled or business district. That would be in a business district or a thickly settled area. In thickly settled area, if it's not posted and the houses are 200 feet apart or less for a quarter of a mile, that's considered thickly settled. And then of course, business district is the same thing, but it's an eighth of a mile and it's businesses, so it'd be like the center of town. Chapter 90, 18, that's, that's someone who violated and established posted speed limit, whether it's a maximum or a minimum. And that can be, you can be cited in private or a public area, and that can be anywhere. It just has to be posted. And the sign has to be similar to what DOT uses, so it has to be similar in size, it has to be similar in like how the numbers are displayed. And then the third is engineering. There's a variety of traffic calming methods that can reduce speed to reduce volume and or improve safety, which are custom designed to meet each neighborhood's specific needs. We like to call them road diets, and, and we use them, the best example would be West Main Street. We usually narrow the road, the travel lane, you add a bicycle lane, you add what they call fog lanes, which are like two to three feet right on the side of each road, and actually narrowing the travel lane actually slows people down. It's more psychological. Also, pedestrian crossing medians, diagonal parking in business districts, widening sidewalks and narrowing streets and traffic lanes, similar to what was done at the center of town. We widened the sidewalk and removed people from parking there and also narrowed that, those lanes. Sidewalk extensions that intersect, intersections create safe havens for pedestrians. We did that. That's kind of similar to what we did at the center of town as well. Those sidewalks at, right at the center of 140 and Main Street are wider, and what that does is it gives pedestrians a better chance to see and be seen by approaching traffic. Physical diverters that intersecting ways slow traffic as well. You know, that might be like a small island, or you might have seen them like they're like triangle-shaped islands, and they might have like a, a sign that says go around. That actually slows people down. Raised pedestrian walkways are another way of slowing traffic. Speed bumps. I personally don't recommend speed bumps. It's difficult to plow in this part of the country, and studies have shown that they're not really effective. And traffic surveys. Now, traffic surveys, we do quite a bit, and again, we're gonna be using that radar sign to conduct traffic surveys, and it's a great piece of equipment for that. You can determine average speeds, the time speeding is occurring, et cetera. Very rarely, this is important, very rarely do the surveys indicate that the average speed, that 85 percentile, travel higher than posted or unposted speed limit, which is needed to change the speed limit. So that's important to note. In order to change the speed limit, you have to do a, a traffic study, and it has to be higher than what, 85% of the, the motorists travel. An example, we just did Maple Ave, and a lot of people thought people were gonna be traveling over 40. The average speed was 40. Studies have shown, and this is interesting too, and we gotta keep note of this, studies have shown locations with high traffic citations may indicate that the posted speed limit is too low, and speed studies would actually increase the posted speed limit. So an area where we may have a lot of traffic citations may just be that the, the, the speed is just too low. This is what the factors in increased traffic volume, this is what I feel is affecting the traffic volume of the town of Shrewsbury. As we all know, we're 41 miles west of Boston. We're bordered west by the city of Worcester. It's the second largest city in New England. There are four major highways that go through the town and over 150 miles of roadways. Also, we're unique. We have Laquan-Sigman, which attracts a large recreational population during the summer months. That increases traffic on the roadways as well as traffic on the lake. It's in one 10 miles of over 10 highly ranked colleges, as well as multiple large biotech firms adding to the daily traffic volume. Also, new housing and commercial developments with added additional roadways to access them will increase the need for traffic calming and traffic enforcement. And it's been asked, is traffic enforcement effective? Yes, but it requires constant and continual presence in addition to being highly visible and long-term. The best example I can use is every commuter will tell a story about, they commute to, through their workplace, and they'll see a cruiser in a specific area every day. And aiming after that cruiser's not there after a couple of weeks, they tend to slow down when they're approaching that area. It's actually very common. These are the barriers to traffic enforcement in the town of Shrewsbury. We lack the adequate staffing for a dedicated traffic enforcement unit. Officers are assigned a location to conduct traffic enforcement while being assigned in a patrol sector. However, often the officer cannot be assigned due to call volume or gets taken off the traffic assignment to answer calls for service in his or her sector. Most comparable communities to our size have a dedicated traffic unit. Worcester's, excuse me, Westboro's half our size, and they have two traffic officers. Tewksbury is our comparable community. They have three traffic officers and a sergeant. A lot of the, example, Marlborough has three traffic officers and a sergeant, and we have the similar call volume as Marlborough. They just have a lot more officers to patrol the streets. Traffic complaint volume. In addition to the complaints the select board and the town manager receive, the police department received 515 traffic complaints last year. This year, from the beginning of the year to September 20th, the police department received investigated 391 traffic complaints, 61 formal written complaints, and assigned 27 traffic assignments, and conducted 63 traffic enforcement posts based on the complaints that we received from the residents. And that was all done while the officers were on patrol. Again, we don't have a traffic division. Current plan to address the, the traffic issue. Use our current method, which is to forward the traffic complaint to the Operations Division Commander, and that Operation Division's Commander will provide, will follow up when the staffing allows. Again, we've been using this method now for 30 years. It, it's just not as effective anymore. You know, 19, late 70s, early 80s, even 90s it might have been. Now, the officers on the street, they just don't have the time to do it. They're basically going from call to call and we're at minimum manning. Now, we're gonna purchase three additional radar signs that I spoke about, that are, that you've seen around town to make residents aware of the speed limit and the speed at which they are operating. We're gonna receive those on a grant, and we should have that decision in a couple of weeks. Conduct traffic enforcement during the five periods throughout the year through the Municipal Road Safety Grant, which we just received, and officers that conduct radar during their tour of duty when staffing allows. Again, they're, they're gonna try to do it in between calls, and it's just not as effective as it was 20, 30 years ago. Proposed future solution for the traffic in the town of Shrewsbury. I think we should have a dedicated traffic unit, which would provide a more thorough, professional, and better solution to investigate traffic complaints. We should also explore establishing a local traffic advisory committee appointed by elected officials, which would consist of municipal engineer, municipal planner, representative from the governing body, representative from emergency services, representative from the public works, and a traffic officer. The goal of the committee would be to identify project areas, identify speed, and cut through problems throughout the town. I believe the best solution would be accomplished with a dedicated traffic unit in partnership with the town engineer, the town planner, and representative from public works, or a combination of local traffic advisory committee and a traffic enforcement unit.
Thank you. Any questions? We can have, we have time for questions at the end, too. We can have Mr. Howland present, but any? I just have one quick question. Chief, with the radar signs, is there any way, do we get data that as someone, as soon as someone sees that blinking light that they're going 45 in a 30, do we get any data in terms of immediate drop in speed that, that it results in?
You know, that, that's a good question. I don't know that. So immediately, right when they see that speed? I, I don't know.
Okay.
I could check on that, though.
Yeah, I know.
I hit the brakes.
Yeah, no, I know. That's what I, I mean, you're mindlessly going out, doing your daily exercise and doing, and all of a sudden you see like, whoa.
Sure.
Just anecdotally, I mean, I know I have done it seriously, but when people are up ahead of me and, and you can see that thing, you, you watch it when it flashes and you can see the speed drop. So I think it, I think for a lot of people it helps. Some people it probably doesn't, but a lot of people it does.
Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Flynn, go ahead, and we'll go down to Mrs. Castle.
Um, just a question about if, if you were to be able to hire these traffic patrolmen, like, is it any different than any other officer? Do you have to go through all of the same training? Is there a particular other skill set that you would look for? And I'm just sort of thinking through, like, when you were talking about the process that you have to go through in, in finding candidates, et cetera. I'm just wondering if this presents the same types of challenges? Is it in line with all other officers?
What, if they were to be, that we would take them from our current patrol force, and typically they're officers that that's what they gravitate towards. There are some officers that do like to do traffic enforcement. There's officers that, you know, aspire to be detectives, so they just have different skill sets. But what I would definitely, what are my plans would be if I could have three traffic officers, I would have them attend accident reconstruction school so they could investigate all major accidents within the town. Also, I'd have them, I'd, I'd like to send them to a, a school that's geared towards how you enforce commercial traffic, because we have on Route 20 and Route 9, we have a lot of commercial trucks, you know, tractor trailers that, you know, they have a lot of violations on that truck, but we're not specifically trained in that, and that would be a specialty that they, they would be trained in.
Mrs. Castleman.
So if I were sitting at home listening to this, I would be asking why we don't have a traffic enforcement division. I'm pretty sure I know the reasons, but I would, I think it would be better if it came from you as to why we don't have it right now.
Yeah, we, we don't have a dedicated traffic unit division because we're at minimum staffing. You know, we have five on the day shift, we have four, five on evenings, and then four on the overnights, and most nights on the overnights we have three. So we just don't have the staffing in order to have a dedicated traff, traffic unit.
Thank you.
And that's, I know it's a short answer, but that's.
No, and I know, and I've, I've given that answer multiple times to people, and I, I think sometimes it's just hearing it again and hearing it in this kind of a setting sort of reinforces that that truly is the issue, and then in your previous presentation, you talked about the challenges that you're facing, filling the seats that we did have in the academy, and all of that, you know, taking a year and a half to actually get another officer, you know, when the funding is available, you know, there's pent-up demand, and then traffic ends up being something that doesn't make the priority list when you're thinking through all of the different things that an officer needs to be doing on their shift. It's just the reality that we're facing. So I appreciate the, the honesty, and I just hope that people understand from hearing your previous presentation what it is we're facing when we try to solve this problem, which is just a, a huge issue throughout town for many people.
Mr. Mizikar.
So, Chief, just, I think it's also important to point out how many total calls the department has in a year. So someone may say, well, if you have five officers on the day shift, what are they doing? But, I mean, could you share?
Yes, absolutely. So we're a little bit, because of COVID, we changed how we responded to calls, and some calls we didn't. So we were on pace to have about 40,000 calls for service prior to COVID, right before COVID hit. And that's similar to what Marlborough has. Marlborough's a city, and they have a lot more police officers than us. Have it, it's gone down slightly. I believe last year was 36,000, and I think this year we're on pace to be like at 38. But again, that's due to our response protocols due to COVID.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go to Director Howland and ask similar, or the questions that we had, and, and just give your perspective and recommendations, and then we can have more of a general Q and A at the end as well, so if you'd like to.
Sure. So I'd like to piggyback on what Chief Anderson just, just mentioned with, when I started with the town eight and a half years ago as the town engineer, we actually had a sort of a traffic committee. There was a traffic officer, there was the police chief, there was highway superintendent and myself would meet on a regular basis on these traffic, oops, sorry. On the traffic complaints, and we actually received complaints directly from the police department, which we went out and did an investigation on in the engineering department. Over the, over the years, that's probably stopped six, five years, five, six years ago, just because the person that was in that position, I believe, has left the town or no longer is doing traffic enforcement. Engineering department through the Board of Selectment have received numerous requests to do traffic studies on all types of streets. Maple Ave, Old Mill, North Quinsig, South Quinsig, Memorial Drive, Holman Street. There's probably 40 or 50 that we have, I have done in the eight and a half years that I've been here. All but one traffic study that I have conducted in that timeframe, as, as Chief Anderson has stated, shows that the 85th percentile of traffic is doing either the posted speed or the prima facie, prima facie speed, which by Chapter 90 in residential is 30. Might be one or two miles per hour over or under, but they are doing the speed limit. The one I was most nervous about, to be honest, was Memorial Drive, 140. We had received a complaint that cars were flying on 140. Speed limit's 50. I was nervous doing the study, and I did an actual true engineering study in which we, now, go back. When we do the studies, we typically do a study, we'll put this, the traffic counting device out for a week, sometimes two weeks. We want to catch a weekend. We want to catch during the week. We want to catch it during the day, at night, through the whole, basically a week cycle. Sometimes we'll do two weeks if we know there's a, we did one because it was complaint that there was a lot of cars that went through the neighborhood during soccer tournaments. So we put it, made sure that it went through a Columbus Day weekend, which we knew that there was a soccer tournament. So we, based upon the timeframe, we'll keep it out longer. Memorial Drive, oh, so the, that's a sort of preliminary traffic study. Gives us data on whether or not we should do a full-blown traffic study. The only way that we can change a posted speed limit in town, and now we only have eight roads in the town of Shrewsbury which have posted speed limits, and those were all conducted by engineering studies. The last one that was added to the list was Gold Street in 1983. Posted speeds are only, we can only post speeds if it gets approved by Mass DOT and the Department of, of the DMV, Department of Motor Vehicles, has to approve a posted speed limit. We cannot just put up 20 miles an hour just to put up 20 miles an hour. In order for them to approve it, we have to do a true engineering study. We take a look at the terrain. We have to pick several locations along the route. We have to take radar speeds, or we have the tubes, the traffic tubes, in which we are out on site for an hour, and we take the speed of all of the vehicles, the, if there's a row, a row, we have to take the first car. We have to eliminate all the other cars after that. And it has to be during ideal traffic conditions, not during peak hours, so not early in the morning, not during, peak in the afternoon, not during heavy sunlight, not during snow or rain. It must be, probably usually it's between 10 and 11, between one and two, maybe two and three. But if the school buses go through and stops traffic, we have to eliminate that from the test. So it's a very lengthy timeframe to do it. I highly, when somebody asks me to do a traffic study, I highly suggest not doing a true traffic study, but let's do the preliminary. Because once the town of Shrewsbury submits the data to DOT, historically, the speed limit will probably be higher. You will have to go by the higher rate, speed, which is why I've been receiving numerous requests to do Prospect Street. More than likely Prospect Street, which we have determined based on a preliminary study, was to maintain status quo of thickly settled, which is 30. A true traffic study will probably net 40. We would have to change the speed limit to 40. That would be the new, new speed limit of Prospect Street. That's my, I'm not saying that's what it would be, but my gut feeling is that's what it would be. As I said, Memorial Drive was one I was extremely nervous about, because I was assuming that posted speed was gonna be, end up being 60. Just my observations. We conducted a speed study. Speed limit was 50, much to my surprise, I was surprised. The residents still complained. We ended up going to Mass DOT. They filed a complaint with Mass DOT. Mass DOT independently went out and did a study, found it to be 50. I think that most of the people, it's a perception that vehicles are traveling faster than they actually are. We received a lot of complaints about Maple Ave. The 85th percentile was 40. It was right on 40, and we've conducted that now three times. It's 40. To again add to what Kevin said about traffic calming, there's several, several things that are not traffic calming devices. We received a lot that people are speeding in high volumes. Adding stop signs, traffic lights, speed limit signs, turn restrictions are not traffic calming devices. They are regulatory and cannot be used for traffic calming. Studies have actually shown by adding stop signs actually speeds up traffic. Because they're used to traveling, takes them say ten seconds to get from point A to point B. If they have two stop signs in the middle, it still takes them ten seconds to get to point A and B. So they're doing much faster in between. It's, and is it traffic signs, stop signs, they're all regulatory? And MUTC, which is the Manual of Unified Traffic Control Devices, which is the national standard for design of traffic signs, signage, line striping, et cetera, lane widths, indicates that you, there is a procedure to adding stop signs. So whenever we get a request for stop signs, we have to look at each intersection, whether it's volume, whether it's, there's crash data, other history, but we, we, engineers do have a little bit of flexibility, so we have added stop signs on a rare occasion. But typically, most places that request stop signs doesn't meet the warrants. There needs to be a significant volume of traffic to warrant a stop sign. That's why at most subdivisions, at most of the locations, there are not stop signs. And I, I will mirror what Kevin says. I think that having a more unified traffic, his traffic enforcement department, but also a committee that we, again, we get together on a routine basis. Because to me, as, as the previous town engineer, but also as DPW director, who has highway underneath, is more to the safety on the streets. It's more than just engineering. There's, there's police because they actually see things that we don't see. We see things based on engineering. Highway sees things for, through maintenance, et cetera. And I think the three, combinations of the three plus having other members, I think that that would be very important for the long term of safety on the streets. Now, increased volume on some of these side streets, Holman, Spring Street. I also strongly believe that that's the, because of Waze and that type of, of software, which are taking people off of Boylson Street and putting them on the side streets and the secondaries. I was at a conference about a year or just prior to COVID and the Northborough Police Chief said that that is a major problem. When two ninety backs up, the center of Northborough gets inundated in traffic. People get off, get off the main road and that's the, that's the routes that they're taking. I can tell when there's a problem on two ninety in Worcester, going home because Route nine going over the Lake Manzig Bridge is backed up. And historic, usually when I go home, it's not. I can tell that the two ninety bridges, or bridge on two ninety is backed up. So Waze is taking people off the main roads and putting them on the, on the secondaries. And then I was thinking as I was driving around today, if I go from Boylson Street to the Northborough Town Line, if you're coming from the north side of town, there's only four roads for that entire stretch that actually gets you to Main Street. Spring Street, School Street, Holman, and then Boylson Street. That's it. So you have a lot of traffic that are entering Main Street from only from four locations. And two of those are very narrow. Actually, three of those are very narrow. So I'll open that up for questioning.
Just ask a question. Thank you. Mr. DePaulo.
Mr. Howland, can you explain what the eighty-five percentile means to the layman? I know, I know what it means, but what the significance of the eighty-fifth percentile is?
So eighty-fifth percentile is what eighty-five percent of the people will travel at that speed or less during normal traffic conditions. So that's where eighty-five percent of the people feel comfortable driving at, so if it's posted at forty, that's eighty-fifth percentile will be doing forty miles per hour or less.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? So we've heard tonight, just a few things, just to summarize, that I think one important takeaway, at least we've seen from the informal traffic studies, is that perception is not always reality, right? So I think we've all been walking on the streets, whether with a pet or not, and someone seems to zoom by. And the reaction is, wow, people are flying on the roads. And that does happen in some of the studies, but it shows that's typically an outlier off hours, but it does happen during the day as well. So that is, the traffic studies we've done, it does seem to, it does actually reinforce the notion that folks are generally going eightieth percentile rule. In terms of the reactions we've, as we've received these, either we reach out to the police department or reach out to, to Mr. Howland's office, and we do conduct these studies. In terms of short term, education is something that we can do. Enforcement, though, for that to be calming, that has to be real and consistent. So that's something I think is a longer term, but something as we're developing planning in this budget this year, is going forward as we look together with a five-year fiscal projection where that could fit in. More short term, together with education monitors as well. I mean, clearly anytime you drive, they were on South Street, people have a tendency early in the morning, seem to go a little faster. They must want to go to Price Chopper. And then they see the flashing light and they slow down pretty quickly. So those are short term things. I think enforcement now, you have all those calls, thirty-eight thousand calls this year. That's the priority and, and you get to traffic, as you said, to have more quicker reaction times after the fact, but you have priorities as well. So that's something I think longer term we need to look at. And that's why I think your strategic plan is very key as part of our overall strategic plan is public safety. I would imagine will be an important element for our community and how that fits, keeping our streets safe as more people are walking and running and hopefully from the pandemic, as you see more people on the road, you'll continue to see that. Folks, if we adopt a complete streets program with more bicyclists as well, we want to make sure that people are indeed safe. And as we vision the town center and having more foot traffic, absolutely want to have a safe community. So all of this, we need to fit together. So short term, I think that the education, we need to look at longer term for enforcement. We can do monitors. And we can continue to do traffic studies, at least that's some of the points that I hear that we need to figure out going forward and continue to respond to citizens as we get emails and reach out to all of you and the experts to hopefully get answers to the community in terms of, hey, we're looking to the issue and let's see if there's an issue here and we'll continue to do that. But that's what I see at least short term in terms of the monitors and education and longer term in terms of as we budget already going into twenty twenty-three. Please, Mr. Howland.
So I, we still encourage you to forward us any traffic complaints that you receive. Because several years ago, we actually had received a complaint, which we did a traffic study on and actually found an individual that every day at two o'clock, there was a car that was speeding significantly. Notified the police department and they actually gave a ticket to a person and ironically was the person who filed the complaint. But that we do, if we see something that there's excessive speed, especially if, if there's random, most of them are random. We'll get one at one o'clock, then one at seven o'clock at night, then two in the morning. But if we start seeing one that every day at between three and four, more than likely, it's this, that the person's going to be doing it every day, same time. And we have notified the police that, hey, can you, between three and four, right at this location? And sure enough, we were able to catch that particular person. I've not heard from that person again.
This is Cassavant.
I really do appreciate all the time you put into these presentations and also just informing the community as to, you know, what really we can do and what we can't do. So it's realistic, right? The expectation that people have when they do call in with a traffic concern. I just want to say, I think it's incumbent upon every person who's driving in town to think about your speed and, and be aware of how fast you're driving. When you're driving through a neighborhood that's not yours, are you using it as a cut through? Are you driving the way you would want someone to drive if they were driving through your neighborhood? We're all community members. We're all neighbors. And a lot of times, we're also the people that are violating the speed limit. So I think it doesn't hurt to be mindful of your own speed as you're traveling through.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. DePaulo, please.
Comment that came to mind when you said that. I think we also need to remember that Route one forty and Main Street and West Main Street during rush hour are probably eighty and ninety percent people who are traveling through the town. So they don't have the same investment in the speed. Lot, we have a lot of traffic going through town and, and all of it's not local. When you get into the neighborhoods, it is. But on those streets, it's people driving back and forth to get to work or wherever. They don't, you know, they just want to get to work. They're not, they're not sensitive to the issues that we're talking about. Which makes it difficult.
Good. Well, if there are no other comments or questions, I thank you. You've given us a lot to think about. There's some short term things we can do that you've already thought about. We need to continue to respond to citizens as they bring forward issues and, and been very responsive. So thank you for all of that. And thank you for your presentation and presentations this evening. It's information that's been requested in one or way or another, and it also assures folks that are watching and if, as this is posted on YouTube, to have opportunities to watch that we are responding. We are listening to issues that are there or we're investigating whether they are indeed issues and we continue to be responsive to our citizens and we're always looking to do better. And we have great leadership at the helm. So I thank you for coming this evening. Very informative presentations and looking forward to talking to you throughout the year as the budget process develops and just speaking generally. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is under New Business is to review an act to sign the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one special town meeting warrant. I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Mizikar, if you don't mind.
Of course. Happy to walk through the document, go through the warrant articles and provide just a few summary comments. The board will be asking to consider signing this, which would lock in the articles for the October eighteenth town meeting this evening. And then we'll be back at your next meeting on October twelfth to review all the associated motions and details with regards to these various articles. So Article one and two are best described together as they establish a insurance trust fund, which we intend to utilize to stabilize our payments of deductibles year over year. We've moved to much higher deductibles on several of our different lines of insurance, which provides us with savings opportunities year over year in the long run as in comparison to paying a higher premium every year. So this account would allow us to add funding into it when needed, but not overburden the general fund and just turn funds back. We can utilize our resources better. So that's Article one and Article two abolishes a much more narrow similar fund and transfers the roughly forty-five thousand dollars that it is in it into this new account. And we'll also be raising and appropriating additional funds in order to establish this account and balance our deductibles for this year. Article three is a budget, or excuse me, Article three is an article that we will use to make various changes to the current operating budget for the fiscal year. Board members, I continue to see the opportunity to lower the total amount of funds that we need from taxpayers, which will allow us to not utilize the full amount that has been authorized by voters through the override. So that will provide a tax rate savings opportunity and we'll provide all those details as we work those out for the next meeting. Article four and five, transfer funds that have been dedicated to various water or sewer projects. And we've either completed those projects and have additional funds on hand, which are available for other projects. And we wish to transfer those to those projects so we can complete things like our overall water quality improvement program and our sewer pump station improvement program, which require ongoing capital to meet the ongoing needs of those various special revenue and enterprise funds. Article six seeks to appropriate funds that we will receive from the sale of Centec North, which closed last Thursday, to repair and replace Tobin Hill Bridge on Tobin Hill Drive and Nursery Drive and related public features and structures in that neighborhood. Article seven is to appropriate a sum of money that the town has received from transportation network companies, more commonly known as Uber and Lyft rides, where the town receives ten cents per ride originating from Shrewsbury and each and every given year. It's not a large sum of money, but it's several thousand dollars that will dedicate to initiatives like sidewalks improvements, crosswalk improvements and other pedestrian mobility initiatives. It's a narrow set of opportunities that we have to use those funds, but we want to put them into play as soon as possible. Article eight would be to request the utilization of free cash to fund the town's portion of schematic design work to replace the windows at the Oak Middle School. The Oak Middle School has windows in it that are over forty years old and we will seek support from the MSBA and look for a fifty-two percent grant from the MSBA. But this would fund the town's portion of that project. Article nine is accepting additional sections of the Massachusetts General laws to provide additional real estate tax exemptions to certain residents. Article ten creates a special purpose stabilization fund for the sewer special revenue fund. And Article eleven seeks to appropriate funds from sewer rates into that stabilization account. The next four articles are all zoning related, the first one being cleaning up zoning districts along Lake Street, which is associated with the realignment of that roadway. Article thirteen is an opportunity to enhance the ability for restaurants to locate in new zoning districts throughout the community by right and also provides for outdoor dining services. So this is a lesson learned from COVID and seeks to codify that in our general, or excuse me, our zoning bylaws. Article fourteen cleans up our zoning bylaws and brings it more into line with Federal Communications Commission rules and regulations for wireless communication towers and small wireless facilities. We are required to update these bylaws to stay consistent with federal regulations. We're not allowed to contradict or supersede federal, so we need to update our documents and bylaws. Article fifteen adds affordable housing requirements within the town center zoning district, which was mistakenly omitted from the inclusionary zoning bylaw, which is for affordable housing. Whenever we put this new zoning district into place at a previous town meeting. Then Article sixteen will seek funding to acquire a piece of property located on or about forty-nine, excuse me, four thirty-nine Lake Street for roadway improvement properties and authorize the board to carry out any actions related to that, seeking to reduce a severe curve in the roadway. We do not have sufficient town land to do that within that area and this article would seek funds from free cash to do that. So those are sixteen articles. It's four additional articles then were presented at your previous meeting. Two of those were water and sewer. One of them was the Uber and Lyft funds. And then finally, Article sixteen, which was for roadway improvement purposes along Lake Street.
Any questions or comments? I know we talked about most of these at our last meeting anyways, and the others are pretty straightforward, given Mr. Mizikar's explanation. There are any, any questions or comments that entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move the board approve the warrant and sign the warrant.
Second.
We move it in second. And all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. And before we leave this evening, if we could sign the warrant. Next item on the agenda under New Business is to review an act on an address change request in accordance with policy twenty-nine. The gist of it is the address request is to renumber three eighty-four Hartford Turnpike to three eighty-four, three eighty-two Hartford Turnpike to three eighty-four Hartford Turnpike with, so the units one, two, and three would go with that and then change the three eighty-four Hartford Turnpike to fifty-two Clue Street. The request was made in accordance with policy twenty-nine and we have all the various approvals from the department heads that are listed from engineering, planning department, conservation commission, did not opine, fire department. conservation commission, did not opine, fire department, police department, and assessors' review. So the documentation is in front of us, and it complies with the requirements of Policy Twenty-Nine. Any questions or comments? Entertain a motion?
Move approval of the request.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is another time-scheduled appointment. It is to review the wayfinding request for proposals to construct signs in accordance with a shared streets grant awarded to the town. So this, Mr. Mizikar, do you want to take this? We do have a memo from the Planning and Economic Development Department dated the twentieth, which was to the board, to Mr. Mizikar and Mrs. Los, which explains a little bit about this, but any further thoughts on this? It's pretty, well, I'll take a crack at it and fill it in, but it's basically, the, the signpost features here were not part of the original program that was approved la, what, in May 2020? So this is just a specific requirement as part of the program to approve the post? Is it that, is simple as that, or? So it's just, it seems that the only action is the signpost features?
That is correct.
Okay.
Nothing related to the sign, and then also the locations of said proposed sign.
Which is also included in there. As you call, as you all recall, we had a very robust discussion about the signs themselves.
Yes, we did.
Any, any questions or comments?
Um, I.
Mr. DePaulo.
Um, I think also, I was talking to today, um, this, this might be a few less signs than what was actually in the original plan that we saw. It might not be the one that was submitted, but, um, the planning, our engineering went out and looked at locations and made sure that they were appropriate, that they weren't going to block sidewalks or whatever, so, um, it's, um.
There's a lot of detail.
It's going to be helpful, I think. There's a lot of time went into this all the way around from, from the start, so.
Yeah, I was plotting out the various signs, the location that's included in there to see what they are, and they seem to be well thought through and well covered, the area. So as folks, whether unfamiliar with the area, and even those in town, it will give them a clear path and letting them know what's coming up, which is great, as part of the visioning as we continue to develop the town center. So if there are any other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the motion would be to approve the recommended, the, the recommended design features for the signposts and the signage locations. Is that correct? Okay, that is my motion.
Close enough, yep.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to authorize the chair to sign a disclosure by non-elected municipal employees of financial interest form as required by Mass. General Law Chapter Two-Sixty-Eight, Section Nineteen, to authorize the town manager to serve as a steering committee and board member on the West Suburban Health Group. Do this on an annual basis. Mr. Mizikar not only represents the town of Shrewsbury in his capacity as town manager, but also is a part of the negotiating team of the West Suburban Health Group, but he's also a participant. Hence, as a result of that, this waiver is required, the financial interest form, and that is what we have in front of us. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board, the board designate the chair to sign the disclosure.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item is, their new business is to review an act on the walk request for a mental health awareness walk from Jenna Wyman on October second, 2021, at three thirty PM, beginning at the Sherwood Middle School side entrance parallel to Spruce Street, down Crescent Street to Maple Avenue, ending at Oak Middle School. This is a school event. It has been approved by the school department, and the only action that we're approving relates to the walking on the towns in between the school campuses. Mr. DePaulo.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I think it's a great event, but I, I have concerns if a hundred people are going to be walking on Crescent Street. That, that's a tough road, and when they approach the police department, the police department said to talk to us first. Before I voted to approve this, I'd like some feedback from them, because, you know, that, that's a street that gets a lot of complaints about kids walking to school, and we're going to have an event with people walking, more people walking out in the street. I, I just want to make sure that the police are okay with it and that we've got the appropriate safety precautions there, because there's not a lot of room in that road. So I, I have no idea what an alternative would be if the police say it's not a good idea, but, and they may not, but maybe they'll just suggest something to make sure it's safe, so, um, uh, oh, oh, it's going to be like next week. Well, I would.
Saturday.
I'm sorry. I mean, it's a little, it's a little short notice, but if, then I guess I would say, subject to the recommendations or requirements of the police department, because I'm really concerned about that road.
If I recall, when we had, when the Road Scholar Race went on, we had folks walking and running and all throughout those areas. It was probably earlier on a weekend and not at three thirty, but we could subject the motion or approval to sign off, subject to approval of.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure it's safe, that's all.
Yes, should be good with that, if so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion. That, that is generally our motion.
Yes, subject to.
Pending the approval of the police department or any other appropriate department. So with that, I, I will move that we approve conditional on, any conditional on the recommendations of the Shrewsbury Police Department, which would become part of that approval.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that motion. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the town manager's appointment of Aaron Howard, forty-one Venus Drive, to the historic commission for a three-year term to expire on June thirtieth, 2024 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Eight-D. Is there a motion?
Remove approval.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to review certification of application for the Green Communities Competitive Grant Program, an act to authorize the chair to sign the grant application and certification of application, which is Exhibit C. It included in our drive also was a memo from Keith Baldinger to, that we received, to Christian Los and Angela Snell, but it also summarized the grant that would be sought, particularly the, the largest part of it related to LED right, lighting at Town Hall as well as the senior center, if I called correctly, and then there are other projects throughout there. That's what the grants will be, that we will be seeking for those specific projects set forth in that memo. Any questions or comments? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we did receive this by correspondence, but it's a technical issue, so review an act on the streetlight request for Wendy Diaz and Alex Rosa, forty-eight Everett Ave, for a street light between thirty-five and forty-eight Everett Avenue, and I believe the reason we have this here is, requires a board approval to send it over to Selco for their evaluation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep, that's what it is. Entertain a motion for that.
Move we send it to Selco for its review.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to review an act on the reappointment of Frances, Frances B. Zaretti, six twenty-five South Street, to the Westboro Treatment Plant Board for a three-year term to expire on September thirtieth, 2024. Is there a motion?
Move approval, and we thank Mr. Zaretti for his many, many years of service.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And then the last item under new business is to review an act on the one-day-all alcohol license request of Joe Youssef, St. Mary's, Syriac Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive for a wedding on October ninth, 2021, from seven PM to twelve AM.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now on to correspondence. Email dated September thirteenth, 2021, from Aaron Flaherty, environmental analyst for the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office regarding a second notice of comment period extension under EEA number fifty-nine fifty, NPC Centec Park, Noah Shrewsbury, so noted. Item twenty-one is an email dated September thirteenth, 2021, from Jadi and Pranjal Sakia, two twenty-one Spring Street, regarding speed enforcement request at two twenty-one Spring Street. In this correspondence, I actually saw two things. One, we can, as a speed request in that may, something we could ask DPW to conduct a speed study, but as, the second part is a letter from a doctor requesting, that was included here as correspondence, as well as a potential sign. And what I would request is that Mr. Mizikar and I could work together, looking at Policy Number Six relating to street signs, and come back with a recommendation, if any, in light of what's been requested by this family. It seems to follow squarely under that, and we'll take a look at the policy and see if the policy still makes sense as well. If that works with everyone on the board, we can do that at our next meeting on October twelfth. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So that correspondence is so noted, and Mr. Mizikar and I will come back with any recommend changes to our Policy Number Six. Next item is an email dated September sixteenth, 2021, from Aaron Flaherty, environmental analyst from the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office regarding supplemental information for EEA number fifty-nine fifty that we covered under email number twenty, so noted. Number twenty-three is an email dated September seventeenth, 2021, from Jenna Wyman, Joey's Rocks Mental Health Project, Regarding Mental Health Awareness Week, and that's a walk that we had just approved, so noted. Next item, twenty-four, is an email dated September seventeenth, 2021, from Melissa Hollenback, thirty-eight Stony Hill Drive, regarding a four-town recycling event which happened, I believe, this past Saturday, so noted. Number twenty-five is an email dated September eighteenth, 2021, from Elena Powers, twenty-two LeBeau Drive, regarding North American hummingbirds are losing their habitats with each passing summer, so noted. Item twenty-six, an email dated September twentieth, 2021, from Nadeesh Shavish and Kar, fifty-six Half Good Way, regarding rehoming a dog in Massachusetts, which we're aware of, it was just a request, potentially rehome a, a dog from Pennsylvania to Massachusetts that had some issues, but since such time, we understand that dog will not be rehomed to Shrewsbury, so noted. Next item is an email dated September twentieth, 2021, from Peter Leo, five David Road, regarding town bylaw, which we have since referred to the Shrewsbury Police Department, so noted. That just related to concerns about a vehicle hauling business potentially utilizing public roads near Mr. Leo, so we have referred that to the Shrewsbury Police Department, so noted. Next item is an email dated September twentieth, 2021, from Kevin Krasnicki, Principal Transportation Planner, Central Mass Regional Planning Committee, regarding CMMPO Northeast Representative Election Virtual Meeting, Thursday twenty-third, so noted. The results of that, which as I'm looking here, Mr. DePaulo, want to thank you for your service in that role. You were the delegate since two thousand and seven, and you graciously stepped aside to serve and now be an alternate, but serve in that capacity for three years, but thank you for all of your hard work. The Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, or this role, as, as you had helped explain to all of us for, that asking, it's the regional entity that allocates state and federal dollars for road improvements and long-range transportation. So thanks for all of your hard work on that for many years. That's so noted. Next item is an email dated September twentieth, twenty-one, from Kevin Mercer, nineteen Honeysuckle Lane, regarding Honeysuckle Lane traffic. We have responded to him, as well as referred that to the DPW, so noted. Next item is email dated September twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, from Wendy Diaz and Alex Rosa, forty-eight Everett Avenue, regarding a light request, which we just voted on, to send it over to Selco for their evaluation, so noted. And the last item that I see is an email dated September twenty, twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, from Jensen Mahia, Director of Operations at Florencia, regarding Florencia LLC and Canamis Delivery License and Host Community Process, so noted. That's all we have tonight on our promenade of agenda. Anything further from any members of the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us. See you on October twelfth.